I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty and freedom for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
Alright, thank you for that. And I'm going to enter a motion to approve this agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for this special board meeting.
Okay, any discussions, changes? Not hearing any, and not having any students here. All four passing this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that pass, oh, aye as well, and that passes. Okay. Now we're moving over. And today we have Nate helping us here for, to ask the questions. And then there will be 25 minutes for each person for their interview. And if they brought a PowerPoint, they will have exactly five minutes or less to finish that. And then they will have 20 minutes to answer 10 questions, which is roughly two minutes per question, just putting a bell mark out there for that. So, are we ready with the first one? So our first one is Ray and Associates.
Yeah, and Director Crocker, I recommend reframing that timing piece as well. Currently, we're muted and our camera is off. So I'm going to put them up on the monitors in a moment and let them know that they're, you know, they're now, we can hear them and see them. And then I'd recommend just sort of reframing that if you could, if that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely. I thought everybody could hear me, I'm sorry.
Not quite, but it's totally fine. Alright, I'm gonna let them know.
I'm setting the timer for 25 minutes.
Once they give, once they start their presentation?
Yep.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to move you over to the monitors now. And I'm going to unmute my, actually, let me, I need to channel my sound through the, so just forgive me for one moment for some AV, some quick AV, because we will be able to hear the presenters through the TV. Jackie, I may need you for volume control super fast, just in case it sounds like, in case we hear everybody in stereo too loud. Ray and Associates team, can you hear me okay? Great, alright, so our board president's going to now speak. If you have issues hearing her, let me know and I will quickly stand up and move my laptop over so they're closer to the microphone. Okay.
Okay, thank you Nate. My name is Leanna Crocker, the President of the North Mason District School Board. And you are going to have 25 minutes for this interview. And if you have a presentation on PowerPoint, you will have five minutes or less to finish that. And then you have 20 minutes to answer 10 questions. So just about two minutes apiece, or whatever, but we will stop at 20 minutes. Or 25 minutes, I'm sorry. And that's it. And Nate's gonna be asking the questions today, so we can focus on our taking notes and listening.
Great, we're able to see your screen just fine.
And can somebody say something on their end?
Oh, one moment please. I'm so sorry, we're just figuring out the sound. I do apologize. And your time has not started yet. We're going to make sure that we hear you through the monitor.
It was very quiet at first. Yeah, we'll turn it up for sure. Yeah, I think he's...
My apologies, just making sure that we got this all set. Almost there. Could you please try speaking again?
Oh, there, can you hear the sound? There we go.
There it is.
Very good.
Great, can you just see them again?
Okay, well, good evening. A pleasure being with you this evening. We are Ray and Associates, and we're happy to be speaking to you about this superintendent search. Very excited about it. I'd like to introduce myself and our team. My name is Steve Chesnap. I was a 35-year educator in the state of Washington, teacher, principal. I was superintendent for 21 years in three different districts. 12 years in Moses Lake, six years in Dayton, three years in Seala. And finished my career in Arizona. I was superintendent for six years here. And my last two years of full-time work, I was with Scottsdale Unified School District, where I served as Executive Director and Associate Superintendent, and then worked with Ray and Associates for four years.
Good evening. Go ahead, Richard. Go ahead, Richard.
Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent of the Backing Community Members. My name is Richard Lasswell. I'm currently Assistant Superintendent in the P.O. School Districts. My family is originally from Columbia, but I grew up in a military family and attended D O G schools prior to our arrival here in what at the time was Portland. I've worked in multiple school districts in Pearson County, as an educator, building principal, and a central office in the district. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, everyone, I'll round it off. My name is Lee. My current name resides in Oregon, originally from New York City. I've been living since last before Oregon was Hawaii. Was connected to the Marine Corps for many years. There in Hawaii, I actually started the first hybrid school, K through 12 public school, which still exists, so I just started school there. Now here in Oregon, I sit on the Oregon State School Board. And I have also served as a local school board here in North Platteville during the pandemic as the school board chair, where I had the lucky opportunity to work with Ray and Associates to hire our superintendent before my term was up. Nice.
Thank you.
I've been very impressed, the morning about your school district, primarily through the website, by the type of type of people, and looking at a lot of information. And then we're very impressed with your mission statement, for example. And I really liked the part where it talks about you do this together with the community. Community engagement is a huge part of our search process, and we want to tell you more about that in this presentation. We know this unique issue is facing you. You have growth made up of 25% for the next several years that's coming to your community. You know, levies and bonds are very important. I have a lot of experience with those issues in state of Washington. So we're very excited to find candidates that are ready to meet your unique needs. And we'll talk more about that as we progress. Who we are, we're a national company, and one of the largest student school district executive searches. We have done 14 Washington State searches in the last 10 years, all the way from Seattle to 2,000 students district of Grand Falls. Our associates across the country assist us in recruiting top candidates who are interested in the superintendent position in this upcoming year. Lee, Richard, and I are well-connected in the Northwest, and we still and we will recruit aggressively in the region. We have a two-year guarantee. The new superintendent fees within that time is described on page 20 of RFQ. A lot of good detail in the RFQ response. We have a price tax guarantee, as described on page 17 of the RFQ. Our firm is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout the search process. We take those issues very seriously. And we are committed to bringing you the best candidates to meet the unique needs of your district and your community.
So, in stage one, we begin by gathering crucial input from the board with two primary goals. Number one, developing a timeline customized to the needs of the North Mason community. And number two, identifying the profile of the ideal candidate for superintendentship. This stage includes establishing a search process and timeline that is tailored to the needs of the district. And it includes conducting one-on-one interviews with each board member to understand the priorities, goals, and qualities of this senior superintendent. An essential aspect of this stage is ensuring that we attract a diverse pool of applicants by exploring the board's understanding and background that will clarify us. Since this stage steps the foundation for the entire process, we are committed to helping the board develop selection criteria that are inclusive. In stage two, we expand the input to include district and community engagement, creating a comprehensive profile of the candidate. Here, we combine the board's interview with data from the quality assessment survey, which we distribute to all district and community stakeholders. We also hold both in-person and virtual stakeholder meetings to engage a wide range of constituents and to gather inside our local district as looking for our next leader available. We understand that there's a specific interest in engaging Spanish-speaking families, and I'm pleased to share that this is something we can facilitate. As a bilingual Spanish speaker, I would be more than happy to help facilitate this process correctly to ensure that all voices are heard.
Stage three, which begins the recruitment process of your search. We use a structured system, but we use it with a community sensitivity. And so we understand here with North Mason is very important. So we want to make sure that all the work that's done in stage two shows up in the recruiting process. Like we said earlier, we are aggressive across the nation in recruiting the top candidates, diverse candidates that you will then be able to select from. We want to make sure you're informed decision, decision of quality here, that's not just quantity. We emphasize the uniqueness of your district by making sure the profile of those candidates show up in the way that you asked us to look. And we also make sure, we want to make sure you understand that no matter who you select, you still have that two-year guarantee to make sure that you have exactly who you need during the time that you need it and when you need it. Stage four is the fun part. And you get to select from that pool that we searched across the nation for to see who fits your district best. Again, a systematic process that is using community sensitivity. We don't just look locally, we also look across the nation. And so we want to make sure that everyone that steps in front of you is ready to answer all of your questions and fits within the pros and cons that we work with you when selecting. And bringing those candidates to you, we want no surprises. One, you very clear humanity and why we're putting them in front of you. Diversity and equity is a big part of how we search. We will make sure that you not only see a diverse pool, but when you pick your final candidate pool, you also have a diverse pool to work with. We heard a lot about your beautiful library in your area. So maybe in doing this pool, we do re-selection in the library so that you can have a feel from the community that really feels good for you and in your search process. Last but not least is your selection. And as a person who was going through this process with Ray and Associates, this is probably the most anticipated part of the process. And we want to make sure that you're looking clear that in reviewing the application, we use a unique matrix to allow your group to work through who and what you're looking for. So a combination of steps one through four, then wind up at the selection process and how you'll use the matrix to then have a deep discussion together on who may be the best fit for your district. This is not done in a vacuum. We do this together with you. We are available by phone at all times. So even if we have a meeting with the board, or with individuals from the board, or stakeholders from the community, and one of you have a question, we answer the phone at all times of the day and to make sure that you feel comfortable about next steps and what you are making your decision on. And we know we have questions.
Do you want us to save any questions? Do you want to skip any of the questions Nate, that they might have already answered?
So the discussion right now is whether we are going, first off, can you hear me? That I have mute breaks, okay? We're discussing whether or not to skip any of the questions that may have been answered. I think if, I think we, it makes sense of the board, we can go ahead and ask the questions. And if there's something that you did touch on earlier, through the notes that we've taken, we can, you can note that in your response, that's fine.
Is that as loud as...
Would you like it louder?
Just a little bit. It's muffled a little bit, so...
Okay, I'll turn up the volume just a little bit. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move forward with the questions then. And I'll be asking the questions. And to start with question number one. How do you measure the success of your superintendent placements?
Hey, that, I think we've kind of explained the importance of the profile that we work on your community to develop. And that input comes from community members, teachers, classified staff, board members, administrators, parents, students. And we try to develop the ideal candidate profile. And so our goal is to find candidates that match that profile, and we will be successful when we place a superintendent that matches that profile as close as possible.
And I also just want to add that Eric, in one of the meetings, he spoke about dropping your children off and speaking and watching some of the administrators do their work every day. I think the other side of knowing that it's success is you guys are a close community, right? And you're gonna walk into the buildings and see if this leader is really having a positive impact on your students or not. And so I think that's an important value that you guys can have, the fact that you are close. You see it day to day. And so you're gonna see Brad if it's a success or not. And we will stay in contact with you to make sure that if it's not a success, we can follow through and make sure we make some correction.
Thank you. Question number two. What qualities do you believe are essential in a superintendent? And how do you evaluate these qualities in candidates?
I can start with what I kind of mean someone who sits on cabinet with the superintendent. I would say, when I look specifically at North Mason, kind of building off of what you were saying, I would say there's two things. One is an emphasis on over-communication, right? How do we ensure that our stakeholders, that all stakeholders are in the know in a language? And I don't just mean the language that's spoken, but you know, that we're not speaking in education and jargon, and that people are understanding what it is that we can discuss at school board meetings, the impact of initiatives, a strategic plan, that it's all written in a way that's digestible and accessible. That's for an over-communication. The second part, I think, is as a superintendent, you have to be willing to get it right and not be right. And that's so critical. Yes, you are making critical decisions, but you also have a cabinet in the community and the board, obviously, that you work with. And sometimes you have to go back and you have new information to make informed decisions. So I would say there are two things that for us, we really require in superintendents.
Thank you.
If I could, I'm sorry Nate, to interrupt, I couldn't find my mute button, sorry.
Not, not, oh, go ahead.
I also just want to say, you currently have a superintendent that has obviously been there a very long time, over a decade, and has been committed to this community in a way that sometimes is really hard for people to fill those shoes. And so the essential parts of the new superintendent, obviously, is not to replace your current superintendent, who has done a wonderful job, but to honor the work that the superintendent has done and to honor the work that needs to continue to be in a way that takes the community into consideration and also the work of the state in terms of education.
Thank you so much. Okay, question number three. Base, or excuse me, question number three. How will your knowledge of the North, this is a multi-part one, so, how will your knowledge of the North Mason community inform your candidate search process? Provide an example of a customized search that you've conducted. And can you walk us through your approach for engaging with our Spanish-speaking community to ensure their voices are heard during the superintendent selection process? And what strategies do you use to overcome language and cultural barriers?
I think our recent search in North Thurston School District was a good example of a customized search. We take great pride in making it clear that this is the board's search, and we will assist the board to make the search work for your district. I think that's what we did in the case of North Thurston. And I don't know, Libra or Richard would have added anything to that?
I'll add, when it comes to language barriers, or barriers in general, it is very important that as you are making your decisions, we're there to guide and to help you in this process and partner with you. And sometimes there's things that may come up, like a flyer, for which you may forget that we need to do it in multiple languages. And so we're there to make sure that those equity points are always met and never forgotten. And most of the time, those things are not forgotten out of malice. It's just because there's a lot that goes into a search. And so our job is to make sure that equity and inclusion is at the top of every decision that we're making. And I think a flyer is a first example of that. Making sure it's in every language that doesn't create a barrier for anyone. Making sure it's in every type of communication form that doesn't create a barrier for anyone. We did a search in North Thurston when we were in front of everyone. We had the surveys in paper form in many languages, as well as on digital form in other languages, so that everyone had an opportunity to answer those. And we can give immediate feedback to the board based on all of those multi, multi-needs of the room. And it's not just about the language barriers, but accessibility, asking the crowd, is there any accessibility needs that we need to be aware of? And so those are things that we're gonna make sure are at the forefront of every decision, so we don't leave anyone behind in this process.
And finally, I would just emphasize what you were just pointing earlier about space and place, meaning the folks who are there at, I think it's really important. And that's something that we have a conversation about, I think.
Thank you. Question number four. Based on your knowledge of the North Mason community, who have you identified as our key stakeholders? And describe your approach to community engagement.
Sure, I'll talk about that. We've touched on that certainly. And stakeholder meetings are a very important part of our process. We gather input from the community, from the school community, two ways. Through the survey that we described, the 31 Quality Survey, that research-based tool that everyone has access to, and then through stakeholder meetings. We know that key stakeholders are a crucial part of this search process. We don't claim to know all of them. We work closely with your staff to identify the groups. How many groups are needed as far as stakeholder meetings? And then who should be included in those groups? We rely on you to help generate those indications, get the right people to the meetings. We facilitate those meetings and gather that feedback.
And even those that can't come to the meetings, if you identify them as key stakeholders, we will go find them. We've had those things happen to us. Sometimes the meetings that we plan as a group, it's hard to come up with dates and times, doesn't fit in the schedule. But if key stakeholders cannot make it there, we'll get on the phone, we'll show up and meet with them, have coffee with them, make sure their voice is intertwined in everyone else's voice, and they're not left out of the distance.
Thank you. Question number five. What steps do you take to screening vet candidates? And how do you ensure the accuracy and thoroughness of your background checks?
Are you gonna take that one?
Yeah, I can take that one. So this is something we take very seriously. I think it's kind of a three-pronged approach. One, we have a national database that we utilize to kind of run through and do all of the typical things around the background check. But I think that the more important one is that us personally, this team, we're fortunate enough to get this. We are the ones who do the one-on-one reference checks with all of the individuals. So we have some scripted questions that we follow. And we also do a lot of in-depth work that's mainly a little bit outside of that, even through our networks and through social media, to make sure we have a holistic understanding of who the candidates are.
And then we create a report. So you're able to see all of that. There's nothing, again, no surprises. We want to make sure that you have all the information from newspaper articles to what people are telling us. And so you create a report for every candidate, and you're able to pick from a well-informed amount of information. And anything that you want more about a candidate, we will go back and do that for you.
Thank you. Question number six. How will you keep the school board informed throughout the search process? Can you provide examples of your communication practices? If there are disagreements that arise between the board and our stakeholders during the selection process, how do you facilitate resolution and keep the process on track?
I'll take that one. As I stated earlier, I had the distinct pleasure of having Ray and Associates work with our school board when I was a school board president in North Platteville. And the process was seamless in terms of communication. The way that we do it is we stay in contact with each school board. And you guys don't have our cell phone numbers at all times. We have a set schedule that we work with you on creating, where each meeting will have an objective for us to meet our timeline and our milestones that we're looking to achieve to get to the end of this process. Throughout that process, we also have meetings with stakeholders. We also have meetings with community members. And all that information is constantly, I'm going to come back to yours. We have had in the past information that maybe wasn't clear, and school board members have had tough times making decisions because they feel one way and then one feels another way. And so we spend the time with each board member, making sure that we're clear on where they're coming from, so we can advocate for all voices sitting when we're sitting together in a non-emotional way and try to get to the end result that we all really want. As a person who has experienced Ray and Associates as a school board member, I take pride in making sure that school board members feel comfortable in this process. Every step, making sure that, because I know where you're coming from, right? The angle of, oh my God, this is my responsibility. Make sure that you are not only comfortable, but that you know that you can tell me when you're uncomfortable, and that we'll have, we'll come up with a plan so we can move forward together. No one is going to agree on everything all the time, but we can disagree with respect. And so we're here to make sure that we do that well, so that we can get to the end goal, which is make sure you guys have a leader that you're proud of and can move this district forward to the next level.
I would just add that we also will ask for an internal contact person. And you will appoint somebody from the district that we work with to get all that internal work done. And then also one board representative, one board member who will be our main contact. And we have a weekly phone meeting, 10, 15 minutes a week with that board. Usually it's a board prison, but it doesn't have to be. Just to make sure we're taking care of all the detailed communication.
Thank you. And Jackie informed me that we have just under five minutes remaining, with three questions remaining, so I'll speak quickly. How do you ensure a diverse candidate pool? What steps do you take to actively recruit candidates beyond those who are actively seeking positions? And share your track record in promoting diversity and inclusion in your searches?
I think so. So, a couple things. So one, we leverage several networks, national networks, as part of the kind of the initial search. We obviously, I think, one of our strengths, which we'll probably elaborate on a question later, is we're all geographically in three different places, and we are in kind of three different areas in terms of our professional careers. So naturally, we have some different pockets that we go to. The other thing is in terms of time and place, we don't just go to the normal, basically, post jobs. Based off the profile, we actively take a look at where can we find some places that non-traditional candidates might be, and we actively recruit in those spaces.
Question number eight. How often do you plan to meet with the school board president, vice president, and general board? What sort of time commitments would you expect from board leadership? And how will you support the onboarding process for new superintendents?
I'll start with that. On page eight of the RFQ response is our one-page timeline, which is a wonderful document to look at, which gives you a great snapshot of what are our processes like, and initial to five stages of what happens at each, at each part. There are about six crucial meetings that are highlighted in yellow. Ideally, those meetings will be in-person, although they don't all have to be. As long as we can be virtual, whatever meets your timeframe. We try to work through your regularly scheduled meetings. And we try to make the process very manageable for you. We'll do most of the heavy lifting, but it's definitely a partnership with the assistance of the board. For example, in selecting candidates for that first round of interviews, selecting candidates for the second round of interviews. Those are two meetings that maybe take a couple hours. But for the most part, it's a, it's a pretty smooth process that we facilitate, really, on our end for the most part.
Thank you. Question number nine. We are speaking with multiple search firms this evening. What differentiates your firm from the other finalists? And how do you ensure that your services provide good value for the investment?
I think so. I think one of the strengths that we have that mainly sets us apart is that we have three different people in three different places. So we have Steve, who is an retired superintendent, living here in Arizona, has years of experience in that realm. Libra, who's not coming necessarily from education, but does lots of work in that realm, is a former school board member. And then I'm actively involved, obviously, in the P.O. School District in Washington State, so very into with local and statewide initiatives and issues that we're facing about the education.
Thank you. And finally, what networks do you have outside of Washington State? And what percentage of your candidate pools come from out of state?
That's a good question. We have, we have a great national network, as I described, with associates all over the nation. Our website gives 25,000 unique hits a month. When people are in the job market, our search firms are one of the first places that they will look at for openings and make contact with. When I was in the job market, that's what I did, for example. So we have a good national network, and we work that network hard. And we get, it varies by the search, but we typically get a good percentage, maybe 25, 30% of the candidates from out of state, sometimes more.
Thank you so much. And I think that's time, Jackie?
Thirty-eight seconds.
Thirty-eight seconds, well done, y'all. So, thank you so much for your time. And I'll just, again, show that the board is here, and they're, maybe they were able to hear what you had to say. We appreciate your time and have a fantastic evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so on to our second one. Are they in person or on the... They're in person.
In person.
Okay, and this is Hazard, Young, Etia, and Associates. So, the way that this is going to go is you will have 25 minutes... So the way that this is going to go is you will have 25 minutes. The five minutes is for your presentation PowerPoint, five minutes or less. And then you have 10 questions to answer within 20 minutes. And so roughly two minutes apiece, you can figure that out. And then Nate will be asking the questions from over there. But if we need clarification, we'll ask you to clarify for something. And we could hold it to the end or it could be right away. So.
Okay. So we're just, we're ensuring that your presentation's projected.
Okay.
Time's not gonna start till he's.
Yeah, and we're on time.
And where are you both coming from today?
Well, today, I have family 12 minutes from here, so.
Oh, wow.
So.
So that's my mother-in-law. So I have time to clean up bits in and out today. Yeah. And so we love it up here. Chris came.
Yeah, I'm Marysville area.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. Yeah. And where are you from?
And when I'm in Washington, I'm in Chiwalo.
Oh.
And then my wife and I sleep time between here and Tucson, Arizona. So it gets really rainy.
Smart.
Okay.
Warmer.
Well, should we jump in?
Yeah.
Wonderful to meet all of you and thank you so much for the invitation to interview with you this evening. We're gonna mix it up a little then and do a very quick, high-level overview of some of the slides that may or may not, you know, be addressed in your 10 questions. So, you know, thanks for the opportunity. Who's predicting here? So thank you. Thank you.
I'll try to follow along.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Can you maximize it, Jackie? Or is that? It's okay. Is that the same card what you have in front of me?
Okay. Yeah. We just wanted to provide a copy to you if you wanted to make notes or whatever. But we wanted to introduce ourselves just a bit so you know a little bit more about us. I'm Chris McDuffie and 43 years in public education in the state of Washington, all in Western Washington, actually. Teacher, principal, superintendent for 17 years. I worked for Western Washington University for 26 years, training principals and superintendents, helped them start their superintendent certification program a few years ago. So wonderful experience. Been doing search work for the last four years since retiring from my last superintendency.
Yeah, and I'm John Dash, 35 years of service, all here in Washington, primarily in the southwest region and in Lewis County. That included service as a teacher, building leader, district leadership work on the instructional side and on operations. I did serve as superintendent in the Tonawara School District. And wrapped up my career as assistant soup and special ed director in Tonino School District, where I did my first superintendent search. And so I, like Chris, we've been working together for four years. Love this work and really take pride in customizing our searches with every school district we serve.
We just wanted to mention Helene. She couldn't be here with us this evening, but a wonderful addition to our Washington team. She has 35-plus years' experience as well in educational leadership, some in New York, most in Washington. But she most recently retired from WASA, so Association of School Administrators, serving as an associate executive director. She was an assistant superintendent for ESD 105 over in Spokane also. So a great addition to our team, incredible networks across not only our state, but the whole region. So we'll just bounce ahead a couple of slides, actually, and provide that overview of the process. Most all firms are going to have this type of process and it's very flexible. We would be determining the actual calendar with you during an initial planning meeting. We look forward to rolling up our sleeves and working out the fine details. But these are the four phases that we'll also touch on a little bit more during the questions. Sure. So we'll just bounce ahead maybe to the calendar draft.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
There we go. Yeah, so the timeline you see on the screen here could kick off in October. And again, you don't see specific days because we set these dates with you. And sometimes it takes a few iterations to finalize a complete calendar. But we factor in things like your school calendar, early release days. If you have special events going on and we notice that you have several committees gathering around special interests like your levy and a potential bomb and your community conversations. So we want to leverage where we could, those kinds of things. But the phases in our process are reflected here. Generally, it's a three-to-four-month process. We've had boards that want to shrink that and we've had boards that want to expand that. Because you're early, you have the luxury of not having to rush and still be in that first wave of superintendent selection.
So very doable to have a decision made by March, which really optimizes the time for transition with your new superintendent. Wonderful support that we provide as a firm for the transition services all the way through into the next school year. We'd love to share a little bit more about that, maybe what distinguishes us to transition workshop, a lot of board development as a part of this search process. Given our backgrounds and experiences, we really think that's value-added. But the time between March and July 1, a lot can happen to ensure a really smooth new beginning. So maybe we go to.
Are we getting close to our five minutes? Because we want to make sure we honor your time.
We're going. Fee structure, again, going ahead, just a couple of highlights, John, and see if you have questions.
Sure, yeah. So our base fee is shown here. That includes, it says for onsite associate days. That's primarily for the engagement work that we'll come and do. And that can be in partial days or full days. We like to maximize it. So if we're here for a day and you also want to see a community forum or two in the evening, we stay for that. We'll do a long day if you'd like us to. But we also come for interviews and are here to support you for that. So that's on top of the four days, even though it doesn't spell that out. The advertising that we do in-state is WASA and WASA. And that's where the lion's share of candidates are going to be looking who are from Washington. But we are a national firm and we have a robust website that we also post your position on right out of the gate, once we've approved the position announcement with all of you. And it includes all of our associate vetting of candidates. There is a due diligence option you have on the right side of the chart you see on the screen. There are some additional things that you can consider and we'll get into that if we're selected as part of the planning conversation with you. We also include a basic survey to gather input using that tool beyond the face-to-face and/or remote kinds of focus group listening sessions we do.
And we know that we're going to get a chance during the questions to talk a little bit more about why HIA, what distinguishes us. But we wanted to just highlight one particular tool that has really been well-received by boards, and that's the portal. It's really just an organizer that we've gotten a lot of great feedback about. And it's, you know, password-protected and maybe we could advance to that slide. Thank you, Jackie. Just, I know you've had a chance to kind of get an overview of this. But do you want to add anything, John?
It's just a dedicated place for board members only, where it's a clearinghouse. Anything that we might have talked about before, if there's an artifact or V notes or record of decisions you've made in the process, we try to capture all that and make it a one-stop-shopping experience for you, along with a live calendar that we continuously update. So if you're ever wondering, well, what did we decide there? You could easily go and hit the link and you know.
So communicating with the board is absolutely critical. We absolutely stand by our commitment to keep all board members informed throughout every phase of the process. We'll talk with you about appointing liaisons, possibly one or two board liaisons that can really meet with us almost weekly. We like to set up a weekly touch base just to make sure everything's progressing well. And if there are decision points, we'll know at that point whether it should go back to the whole board or whether the liaisons have authority to take care of other minor issues. That would be your call. But that kind of communication and commitment is also reflected in this board portal.
Great. I think we're right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
We were waiting for the hook.
Jackie's, are you still doing, we're gonna watch the days are good?
Okay.
So give you a little heads up before the end.
Okay.
I'll be asking the questions. Feel free not to address those questions to me. You'll hear a voice back.
Whatever makes you feel comfortable.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. So question number one, how do you measure the success of your superintendent placements?
Great question. We believe as we customize each search, one of the early things we do with the board is fashion an initial advertisement for the position. So we have some very common language that other boards have used, but we want input from you on what it is our high priorities right out of the gate, knowing that the next step is we're gonna be listening to your stakeholders, gathering survey data and fashioning a leadership profile report that will go further than the announcement that we'll share with prospective candidates and those that apply. So as we measure the effectiveness of our superintendent selection process, it's how closely do the candidates we presented to you match up with what you said you wanted? Sounds simple, but sometimes that's a challenge. And so we do a tiered system when we vet candidates and then ultimately present them to you. Number one, we don't screen anybody out. You will see everybody who submitted a completed application. But we will put them in tiers for you. Tier one candidates will be those that most closely match the highest number of looked-for's or criteria that you established. Tier two will be some, but also no red flags with the tier-two candidates. And they may not be quite as experienced as some of the tier ones, but still qualified and viable. Tier three, folks, we might have uncovered some serious red flags about and we're gonna be very transparent. Say we found these two news stories, they left their last district under duress. Here's the news story link if you want to read it. So we'll provide all that to you. In addition, a measure of how effective the process has been is how long does the superintendent stay? And in our firm, we boast a 94% success rate in candidates staying through the term of their first contract. In Washington State, as I'm sure you know, you can contract with your next superintendent for up to three years. And so, again, we take pride in having 94% of our candidates nationwide completing the entirety of their first contract. Finally, we do a client survey with each board that we serve. It's a zero-to-10 rating. Our client satisfaction score over the last 10 years has been a 9.2 out of 10.
Thank you. Question number two, what qualities do you believe are essential in a superintendent? How do you evaluate these qualities in candidates?
Thank you. First, I think we would reference the leadership profile report that we would be putting together for you after our engagement phase of listening and learning from all of your constituents, staff, students, families, communities. We will be asking you for who all those constituent groups are that are critical to be heard throughout this process and we'll be working diligently. And then after that data gathering, that it also includes that survey John mentioned, we put together a leadership profile report that summarizes all of that information. Greatest strengths of the district, greatest challenges moving forward. And finally, what qualities are you looking for in your next superintendent? So obviously, that's a critical touchstone in what qualities are most important. But beyond that, we certainly look to what evaluation tools are out there. What does research say about leadership efficacy, superintendent standards and expectations? How do you know what the job of a superintendent looks like? What does exceed standard look like? And there are just, really, we've come a long way in our state, certainly from where I started as a superintendent, with these great rubrics that we can all use as a guide. And we can help define excellence, you know, together. So we look to the state standards around this and talk about, we also provide training if you're interested or in need of superintendent evaluation processes. So we can help with all that as well. But finally, just one umbrella statement about what the research says. Is this notion of the balance of task and trust, that's just an easy way to sum up all the research over multiple decades. Does someone really have what it takes to do, you know, the task stuff? Do they understand the work day-to-day at the superintendency? And conversely, critically important, the trust, which really talks about the relationships, communication, building people up, right? And how critical all of that is. So that sense of attending to both is critical.
Thank you. Question number three, based on your knowledge of the North Mason community, who have you identified as our key stakeholders and describe your approach to community engagement?
Sure. Well, in every district, we know that students, families, staff, your leadership. And when I say staff, your operations staff, your teachers, your parent educators always are part of our engagement process. Beyond that, our homework on North Mason tells us that families, which is not uncommon in districts your size, really see the school as a hub of the community, not just the district. And so there's a robust, youth athletic presence here. And I know one of you is very active in that as we research you as board members. So we would want to engage with you a bit and learn more from you. So who else should be calling? You have names and numbers of folks we should invite or reach out to. You know, coming up to Hill, we see a facility dedicated to Boys and Girls Club and we're sure there are other youth organizations like that. Your data shows that you're approaching about 50% of students qualified for free reduced lunch. If you're like districts I've worked in, or that experiencing that or higher, I'm sure you have partnerships with nonprofits and other family services that we want to connect with. You have an active Chamber of Commerce here and a Rotary Club. Those are, again, important people to connect with. I don't know if you have a school resource officer program, but generally, there's a partnership with your first responders, firefighters, EMTs. Especially if you have a school resource officer, we would want to fold that person or persons into what we're doing. In addition to that, you know, we believe that there are other branches of the school district, sometimes not as prominent, but for example, we know that you have a scholarship foundation here. And so we would want to connect with them. We know that both your elementary schools have active PGAs. We've seen their Facebook accounts. That one of them is already drumming up fundraising, the annual fundraising activity. So you have a lot going on and I think a lot of people deeply interested. Our goal would be, beyond what we've learned from an arm's distance away, the first step in our process is who should we be reaching out to help us and make sure we don't leave anybody out.
Thank you. Question number four, how will your knowledge of the North Mason community inform your candidate search process? Provide an example of a customized search you conducted. And can you walk us through your approach for engaging with our Spanish-speaking community to ensure their voices are heard during the superintendent selection process? And what strategies do you use to overcome language and cultural barriers?
Did you sneak in four questions?
I'm just describing.
Let's pick that apart just a bit. And we'll start with, you know, how our knowledge of North Mason informs the search process. It fully informs the search process. Every search we do is customized and unique to that community and that district's needs. It truly has to be in order for you to ensure success for your new superintendent. So all of that research and the time that we invest in the engagement phase and the writing of that LPR, that leadership profile report, is really critical to drive, you know, the whole rest of the search process. So we take that very, very seriously. I would just give an example then of a customization, maybe in terms of using one of the phases of the process and share how we, based on the board's wishes, we could customize. So if we took the select phase, which is. So if we took the select phase, which is really all about the interviewing process, two districts we recently facilitated searches for approached it very differently. So Monroe, for instance, they wanted their finalists, and there happened to be three. They wanted them there all on the same day, and that worked really well. We were able to figure out all of the logistics and make that happen. So there's some trade-offs for going with just one day with the finalists in the system, in the district, and we can talk more about that later. But that worked very well, and that was a desire of the board. Longview, we just completed last year, for instance, and their select phase, they wanted each candidate there on a different day. And so we just made that work, worked with everyone in the system to make sure all those logistics were handled and that it was going to be smooth. So that's just one example, just using the phase as a distinction with how we can customize. But truly, that's what I started with. Every single search and every single phase of the search is customized. So talking about your Spanish-speaking community, clearly, we are absolutely committed and have a track record of ensuring that all voices are heard in the process. We know that just hosting a meeting at the district office may not reach all of your constituents. We understand that. And often, our marginalized, our disenfranchised, our communities that are not comfortable coming into our schools, we do what it takes to go the extra mile if we understand that they meet regularly at a community center or a church or a neighborhood organization. We're gonna learn that from you and your team, and we're going to go to the individuals in your community to make sure that their voices have a chance to be heard at least. Everything done in Spanish is easy to do. We also have resources in our home office that can do up to many, many more languages. It doesn't, it's not as easy, but it's certainly doable. So we're used to that. I might mention, because you specifically call out Spanish-speaking families and students, we actually had the honor of doing the Phoenix Union High School District search last year. Joan and I and a colleague from California, and talk about an interesting system, 26,000 high school students.
Yeah, 30 minutes.
And 90%.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. On this question? The total, I think. Is that right?
A total.
Overall.
Wow. Okay. So it was, we obviously have some experience reaching out to our Spanish-speaking families.
I'll read fast. Question number five. What steps do you take to screen and vet candidates? And how do you ensure the accuracy and thoroughness of your background checks?
Critically important part of the process. We do not just a full vetting of the application package submitted, but we reach out to references, and then because of our network, we always go well beyond the names and context candidates give us, because it's usually fan mail. And if we're gonna uncover for you what we need to, we have to go further than that. We do. We also conduct a pre-screening interview, so we don't just look at paper. We're getting to know the candidate, and that's usually video conference, and that helps inform the candidate summary and the chapter. Beyond that, if we uncover something that suggests a red flag, we go deeper. Latest example I can give you is 12 references on a single candidate in the last search I did, because we simply couldn't get a straight answer on what had gone down. And so we decided we're gonna turn over every rock we could find and then share what we learned with the board.
Thank you. Question number six. How will you keep the school board informed throughout the search process? And can you provide examples of your communication practices? If disagreements arise between the board or other stakeholders during the selection process, how do you facilitate resolution and keep the process on track?
Yeah, I think we touched on this earlier. I just wanna add, you know, again, we're gonna be keeping in touch weekly in some form or another, whether it's through the liaisons or just like a Friday memo that you may get from your superintendent. You can count on us for keeping you informed throughout.
Question number seven. How do you ensure a diverse candidate pool? What steps do you take to actively recruit candidates beyond those who are actively seeking position? Share your track record in promoting diversity and inclusion in your searches.
Yeah, our firm is completely committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we have an exceptional track record. I just might highlight just a couple of things. Obviously, we're a national firm, but with a local team. And so our national network of over 135 associates, very diverse makeup of our associates even across the country, they're on the lookout to assist with ensuring that we have the most diverse pool that we can have. A couple of examples that we have really close partnerships with is ALAS, the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. That's just an example. And we're tightly connected with them. NACSE is another national organization, National Association of Black School Educators. So our firm is closely connected with both of those organizations.
Okay, and that is time.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
I think that you covered a couple of things in your beginning presentation with some of the questions at the very end.
Okay.
He on that you guys have one year?
Yeah, our firm has kind of gone back and forth. I don't know if you heard anything new. We have latitude. We used to have two, I think since COVID and a lot of turnover and consternation in school systems, just a couple of years ago, went back to one. But I think we've got latitude if that's an issue for you.
Okay.
We don't have a concern about it at all.
Yeah, we would go to, Chris and I would go to.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for this opportunity to present to Pearson Jacobson, the executive search firm. This will be very brief, very quick, because I know you've seen this, but we are a firm that is mission-driven, and because we believe that every student is entitled to a high-quality education and that's based upon high-quality leadership, and our search process is designed to bring a pool of quality leaders to you so that you can choose your next superintendent. Why us? We've done nationally over 1,000 superintendent searches in 45 states. We're a national firm, but we're local. I live in Dallas, Oregon, and Gus lives in Beaverton, Oregon. We scan on the strength of our references from previous searches, and our proposal has several letters. We tend to, we are very flexible, and we customize our search to you. And I know that's one of your questions, and we'll come back to that. But what really stands out about us is our retention rate. Every superintendent right now is between, stays about two and a half to three years. 80% of the candidates that we work with to help boards hire are still on the job after five years, 60% after 10 years, and 40% remain after 15 years. So that is one of the hallmarks of our firm, because we work hard to match up candidates with the qualities and characteristics the school board and the school boards and communities desire. We do not hire the superintendents. You do. We work for you specifically. We do not have a stable of candidates, but we have people who've registered with our firm, so they're always looking to us to plan out about openings. Our website gets about 250,000 hits per month because people are looking to us. Who would work with you? Our search team. I'm Doug Nelson. And very briefly, I, 30-year career in the state of Oregon, excuse me, state of Washington. I retired as a superintendent of the Pullman Washington School District. 19 years superintendent with eight years in Bettele Pine, from which I retired a few years ago. I've been, I spent, in my career in Washington, I was a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and assistant superintendent. I've been with Mr. Peterson Jacobson five years, done a variety of searches. And one of the other things that ties me to you is that I'm also a school board member and was president of the Oregon School Boards Association in 2016. Let Gus introduce himself next.
I'm Mr. Giselle Oliver, superintendent in the Beaverton School District, West Side Central, Portland, Oregon. Formerly was a superintendent of the Edmonds, Washington, for a brief time, and also president of AASA, the Superintendents Association with over 10,000 members, as well as president of ALAS, the National Association for Latino Administrators, that has roughly 27 state affiliates across the US. So thank you for having me.
So what's the difference? We're mission-driven. We have an open, transparent process with high stakeholder involvement. We're thorough and comprehensive. We'll be available to you and your staff 24/7. I carry my cellphone with me almost all the time. We have a full-time staff, just added a fourth person, so that we can respond immediately to search needs. We're a national firm, as we said, but we have 130 consultants nationwide that we keep informed about our openings, and we ask for their recommendations for people to, for searches. As I said, we have a strong record of sustainability. Those people we help place, we have a commitment, equity, and diversity, and you saw in our proposal, our company equity policy. We cast a broad net because we are national. And then one of the other things is, we have a guarantee that if within the first two years the person leaves for any reason, we'll come back and do the search without any additional charge except for expenses, and we'll price-match any for as long as they're proposing the same level of service. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing and allow the board then to start asking his questions.
All right.
Fantastic. Thank you. So I will be asking questions on behalf of the board. And so we'll go ahead and get started with question number one. There we go. Okay, question number one. How do you measure the success of your superintendent placements?
It comes down to board satisfaction. Is the board satisfied with the pool that we presented? We'll see it until it's compiled. And then during the first year of service, we're working on what we call Phase Fives. Where one of our consultants, whether it's Gus or me or someone else, works with the new superintendent and board on objectives and how things are going. So we're working during that first year to really see how things are going. But really, it's in the long term, we know what longevity is really of the superintendent is the, probably the best measure of success. How is that person a good match? Is that person staying with the district? And then we also look at letters of recommendations and really what board members have to say. So those are how I'd look at it. Gus?
I think you hit the nail on the head in terms of the fit. It's really about fit for the superintendent and the, and the school board in making sure that we have the right, the right applicant pool. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Question number two. What qualities do you believe are essential in a superintendent? How do you evaluate these qualities in candidates?
Gus, you wanna start with that?
Yeah, so we really look nationwide for the right fit and the qualities that you're looking for for your next leader of your school district. And what I think are essential qualities of a superintendent, the superintendency's changed. I've been a superintendent for 14 years in three states. And really, it really is about having, to me, my core, looking at people with strong integrity, strong values, and making sure that they understand the political landscape that we're currently in in terms of the funding, especially in Washington State right now, and understanding how to maneuver themselves through difficult times. Because again, pre-COVID to now is a very different superintendency. Not only do they need to understand instruction, they really need to be operationally sound. I think they got a lot of, superintendent's got a lot of a good, good understanding of how to be operationally sound during COVID and after COVID. But also right now, just making sure they're good financially, so making sure that they're, understand the numbers, how the numbers are created in terms of the budgets, and understanding the difficult funding streams, especially since SRA just sunset. Doug?
And I add, I agree with Gus. The only I add is that the superintendent has to have a very strong set of communications tools, verbally, in writing, social media, how to really communicate the message. And then really, how do we evaluate those? One of the first things we would do is sit down with the board and ask, what are those qualities and characteristics the board is looking for in the superintendent? Once we determine that, and that becomes the basis for the advertisement, when we start vetting the candidates, those are the things that we ask the different references. And our process is what we call 3D. And...
I'm Leanna Kratzler, the president of the school board here. And I am just going to remind you that you have 25 minutes, five or less minutes for your presentation, and then 20 minutes for your 10 questions, about two minutes apiece or however you wanna work that out. And Jackie or one of us will let you know that when we're at about 10 minutes in your 20 minute. And we'll let you know at five minutes for your presentation. And over to Nate.
Okay, so the presentation's up on the board, so once you start speaking, sir, that will, that will start the five minutes for the presentation or up to five minutes for the presentation, which one are remaining for the questions?
Okay, please go to the next slide.
Okay.
Okay, so Northwest Leadership has been in business for 24 years. During that time, we've done 300-plus searches, primarily in the state of Washington. We focus all of our efforts on Washington State. We have done a few other states, but primarily Washington State. All of us are superintendents from Washington State, successful superintendents in our districts.
Next slide.
Next slide. This is the, this is the team. Tom Rockefeller, who's traveling tonight, is our chief operating officer. Dennis Ray, who's the founder and owner of Northwest Leadership, is on the Zoom tonight to help answer questions. Laurel Browning and myself. Laurel has been a superintendent, and also both of us are from Western Washington University. She is a distinguished alumnus from that organization. I've been in Toledo School District for the last eight, or pardon me, for previous eight years. Last year, I was the interim superintendent for Griffin School District nearby. Next slide. Now, you've looked at our proposal, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do depth by PowerPoint for these. What we do to summarize is that. Next slide. Want to leave lots of, lots of time for the questions. This is our proposed timeline. We're gonna be a little bit later than September, October for starting, because you're gonna make a decision at the end of this month. But ideally, we would finish up in March of 2025. Give a lot of time for transition activities, and the superintendent would start in July. Next slide. Services again, these are the four phases that you'll find in the handout that I gave you tonight. Also mentioned in our proposal. Next slide. This is our fee, and I wanna stress, this is all-inclusive. This is everything. It's not like the picture of the dinghy off of the yacht, and the dinghy is named Contract, and the yacht is named Change Workers. We don't do that. Everything that is in the proposal is covered by this fee. Any mileage needed for onsite work is additional. It's anticipated to be less than $1,000. And we're conscious of district budgets, so we try to keep it right at that $18,100. Next slide. I do wanna stress our guarantee, two years of successful work by the superintendent you select in your district, unless you dismiss for cause, and we won't recruit them for, I think it's three years. Questions?
Yeah, so with that, we will move forward to the question part, and I do have our Zoom participants also here. And so I'm going to move forward now. So I'll be asking questions on behalf of the board. You do not have to respond to me. However, I recommend responding to the board, you're just gonna hear a disembodied noise through your laptop.
Okay.
Okay. So the first question is, how do you measure the success of your superintendent placements?
So our measure of success is, do, do we have a board that unanimously endorses the candidate that they have selected? And does the candidate feel strongly about enjoying? And does the candidate feel strongly about joining the district? It's really important to us at Northwest Leadership that this is your decision, not ours. So we are going to bring you lots and lots of candidates that you will have the chance to winnow down to your, to your finalists, to the person that you select. In this process, our opinion is not very important. We'll make recommendations to you. We'll give you the results of our background checks and our best experience in the field, but ultimately, it's your decision.
Thank you. Question number two. What qualities do you believe are essential in a superintendent? And how do you evaluate these qualities in candidates?
So again, this is, this is a board decision, right? That's, that's part of what we'll be doing in the beginning of the process is finding out from you what's important to you, what's important to your community. What are the, what are the professional qualifications, the education, the training, the experience? And what are the personal characteristics that are most important to you and to your community? And then we go about finding people that meet those for you. Again, you know, my opinion may not be very helpful to you in your community.
Thank you. Question number three. Based on your knowledge of the North Mason community, who have you identified as our key stakeholders? Describe your approach to community engagement.
Okay, so as I look at your demographics, you have a large white population. You also have a large Latino/Latina population and a small number of Indigenous and Black and Asian students. You also have about a 17% special education population of students on IEPs. So, what's the second part for?
Sure, yeah. Who have you identified as our key stakeholders and describe your approach to community engagement?
Okay, so, so stakeholders are going to include all of those groups. In addition, I would say, you know, obviously, districts forget is students. So we need students. We need taxpayers that don't have students in school. We need parents. I would include the faith community. I would include the tribe. Yeah.
Thank you. Question number four. How will your knowledge of?
I didn't talk about how to engage them though.
Okay.
Go ahead. Well, I want to make sure I hit all, it's actually 23 questions. So, so how to engage them, obviously, a lot of it can be done here at school, either in person or via Zoom. I've done both. But I also think that, you know, we can meet them at JR's, we can meet at church, we can meet at fire hall, wherever these folks are. And I think identifying leadership in each of those stakeholder groups is going to help us figure out where it's best and what time and what part of the week is best.
Here's another multi-parter. How will your knowledge of the North Mason community inform your candidate search process? Provide an example of a customized search that you conducted. Can you walk us through your approach for engaging with our Spanish-speaking community to ensure that their voices are heard during the superintendent selection process? And what strategies do you use to overcome language and cultural barriers?
Let me, let me start with that last part first. My background, I spent a number of years as an administrator in a majority Latino school district in central Washington. And so I have enough Spanish that I can kind of understand. I'm not fluent. We are fortunate to have Sergio with us, and he does a lot of work with us when, when it's modeling the Spanish. He would be engaged in the, in the process with us. First part of the question.
Sure. How will your knowledge of the North Mason community inform your candidate search process? Provide an example of a customized search that you conducted.
Right, so the first part is to determine from you folks and from your community what we're looking for. And what are the, what are the challenges and strengths of the North Mason School District? And then, based on what we learn from you, we have people that we know that we think will fit the bill, right? And so we will reach out to them individually and encourage them to apply. We'll also send an announcement with the brochure that we developed for you nationwide to, I think there's about 3,500 recipients. And Dennis, in a minute, I'm going to ask you to speak more to that, if you wouldn't mind. We also look at, well, about half of the superintendents in Washington State come out of the Washington State University Superintendent Program. And so we have contacts with those professors. We talk to them about, you know, is there anybody you would nominate for this position? We talk to folks at the ESDs, anybody that you would nominate for this position. Dennis, would you be willing to talk about the constant contact surveys?
Well, yeah, yeah, just a moment, I will. Our, our network through constant contact is, as you said, somewhere between 3,000 and 3,500. Varies every year, people are dropping off, new people are coming on. But that goes to, that includes people from every state and a lot of out of, out of the country people. It includes all of the heads of professional associations in the, in the states. I'm not sure we've got them all on there now. We did it when, at one point, I couldn't guarantee we have them now. But it certainly gives us good nationwide exposure and even international exposure. Thank you.
Thank you. Question number five. What steps do you take to screen and vet candidates? How do you ensure the accuracy and thoroughness of your background checks?
So candidates go through two vetting processes. So the first is when we receive the initial applications from all candidates. Laurel and Tom and I will check their references, right? And we'll talk not only to the people that, that they invited us to talk to, but we'll talk to people that should know about their performance and their, and their work. We'll, we'll Google them, right, and, and read news stories about them. I, I ask my candidates, is there anything in your background that if it was on the front page of the local paper would be embarrassing to the board? And is there anybody that I, that you wish I would not talk to about your, about your background? And they're generally pretty forthcoming, right? We want, we want to turn on all the lights so we know everything that's going on with these folks. Then, once you select finalists, we run them through a third-party private investigation firm that Dennis is familiar with. Dennis, can you talk about our private investigator that vets the finalists?
Did you catch that, Dennis?
No, I didn't. I had not quite answered.
That's okay, my typing's loud. He asked, he asked about the private investigator firm that you utilize and if you could speak to that in the candidate reference process.
Sure, we use a firm called Pitico Investigations in terms of Spokane and Allee. They, this is what they do, especially when I said that. And it's not the most comprehensive tech. I mean, we could, we could go further and deep, we could have them go further and deeper, but it gives us a pretty good, a pretty good indication if districts want a deeper background check, particularly on out-of-state candidates. If there's in-state candidates, we sort of know most of, most of them and know about them and know about their reputation. But if there's out-of-state candidates that we're not personally familiar with or don't know people that aren't personally familiar with, we're certainly not adverse to going deeper than our standard background check. Using either Pitico Investigations or, or one of the other agencies to do similar type work.
And that includes a social media digital footprint, does it not?
That includes a social media digital footprint?
Yeah. Yeah, and I really can't tell you as much about that. Maybe more, more on that. And I, I have not been involved in doing those personally.
Yeah, when I'm screening, I use the, a rubric, and I take a look at what it is you're looking for. And then I look for some of those cross-patterns when, when I'm using social media, whether it's TikTok, Instagram, Facebook, LinkedIn. And then I, I go in and see who you're connected to and, and do a search that way as well.
Thank you. Question number six, and there are just under 10 minutes remaining. Probably about nine minutes now, is that right, Jackie?
Yeah.
How will you keep the school board informed throughout the search process? Can you provide examples of your communication practices? If disagreements arise between the board or other stakeholders during the selection process, how do you facilitate resolution and keep the process on track?
You'll identify someone for us, a main contact for us, and we'll be available at all times by telephone. We communicate by email, by telephone, by Zoom. We are available as much as you want, probably more than you would want. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I have a calendar. There's a calendar that you'll approve, and there's dates connected to that. And then we'll work with whatever key assistant you have, your current superintendent, and your school board president, and we'll set up a communication, however you want to do that, whether it's texting, phone, email. There's three of us, so that we are responsive. We'll get back to you within that day. And then we come face-to-face with, at your school board meetings, to give you updated reports. Your first one will be focus group information we're submitting for you. And then we'll, we'll continue going throughout the timeline. There's a timeline that's, that's in front of you. And so it's face-to-face, and then we work really hard with your, your school board president on however you want us to deliver that communication.
When it comes to disagreements, we rely on you to identify where there's going to be disagreements. And to, if, if there's disagreements on the board, we're not going to be able to facilitate resolution of that. We're trusting that you will do that. There's, if there's disagreement with the community, you need to be very clear with the community that this is your primary duty and that they have elected you to do this work. And they may disagree, and there will be an election in a couple of years.
Thank you. Question number seven. How do you ensure a diverse candidate pool? What steps do you take to actively recruit candidates beyond those who are actively seeking positions? And share your track record in promoting diversity and inclusion in your searches?
Okay, I'm going to have to, I'm not, I don't have the data for that last question.
Okay.
We can provide that data for you sometime between now and the 28th, when you make that decision. Tom is the keeper of the data. How do we, how do we ensure a diverse candidate pool? We, we just beat the bush. We're going to advertise your position in the Association of Latino Leaders and the Association of Black School Administrators. We're going to advertise your position at AAS. WASA and WASTA will have your announcements. Our website will have your announcements. We, like I say, we know people, and so we're going to be encouraging them to, to apply. I, I anticipate, I, I know, I know very quickly, off the top of my head, you will no doubt receive applications from an international pool of applicants as well. There are a couple of folks that I'm aware of that are trying to move to Washington State. One is working as head of school in the Middle East, and another's working in a similar position in Southeast Asia. For number eight, I think we plan to meet with you as often as you need us to, right? We are available to you. I would expect a commitment from board leadership that you would be fully invested in the process and that you would cause staff to be supportive of our work. We're going to be dependent upon staff for, you know, setting up venues, making announcements, posting things to the website, and making things available to, to the press. Onboarding of the, of the new superintendent, we're, we're with you through the signing of the contract and the board, you know, hiring the new superintendent. Onboarding is up to you. We can assist with that, but it's not part of our proposal.
Five minutes.
Thank you. All of the search firms that you're talking to are high-quality folks. I just happen to think Northwest Leadership is the best. We've done the lion's share of searches in the state for 24 years. We focus on the state of Washington. They're all from Washington. It's a Washington company. We don't, we're not looking at, at districts outside of this state. And we provide, make sure that our services provide a good value by making sure that you're able to tell us we're exceeding your expectations. Networks outside of Washington State, we've talked about that. And percentage of the candidate pool that comes from out of state, I'm going to defer to Tom on that data as well. On behalf of Northwest Leadership and Tom and Laurel and myself, I appreciate your attention and the opportunity to share with you what we do. Oh, I do want to mention that two of your last three searches were done by Northwest Leadership. Your current superintendent and Tom Kelly were both a Northwest Leadership selection.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much. Thank you all on Zoom as well. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet everyone.
You too.
Okay, so we're right down to the adjournment phase to our executive session for deliberation. We will be there for 30 minutes, and we are going to start that at seven. Can we start it at 7:10? It's going to take a second for you to do that. So, executive session at 7:10.